...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justiciable.
First thing on the agenda is Gary. I hope you didn't know I just that I essentially didn't know what's going on in my mind.
Yeah.
I was concerned about I have four employees that's done two of them. Two of them asked highway department or asked highway from here. I was going to move this up here. Thursday we had that meeting not due to matrix. This last meeting. Still no somebody asked. They're to ask. Got questions? Yourself by the authority of the state. I didn't know.
Oh, sir. Turned question. Not.
I have four employees in County Highway that has come back to work. I have one that thirty. Done the Porter County Highway for twenty-four years. Evapor. Not received perfe. Moving him to the twenty-five years of service and say. You're not paid. Ironman. The others. Two of them was at the highway, one come to. Pump them up. Currently be.
Here it is. Hear me?
Yeah.
There's, there's two employees that left. They've been gone over a year?
Yes, yes, they was. It was gone. I'm thinking the one gone for three years. He went to Maryville to beat department. The other gentleman left. Worked another job and then back to that.
Well, we.
I think mine's on. Yes, Jeff, I know matrix, I think it was a year or so or a year and a half ago said that if they left and come back within a year, they could fall right back in. Yes, I know that, but. Sheriff had some last week, last meeting. Some and I thought. Fry.
Well, I, I don't think the sheriff or people that have left here. I really would just end differently on the fact that he actually has to pay for their training. We don't pay for C P L.
Oh, they, they, oh, can't hire them unless they have a C.
I think the sheriff market has a pretty good investment to hire somebody who pays formally pending by uniform.
Yeah, yeah, I, I wouldn't want to be in one of the deputies or, yeah, I want to be. Hell, without problems, snow and a blizzard, urgency only. I don't have a gun coming at me, but.
I don't do it. I understand that in my experience with the sheriff's office, I know it was to take the higher community and the community to have involved. And then I, I was, all I did was I was making sure that you were in a sense of play. I knew that you had to be gone less than a year if you called that in. You know, those few were less than a year.
It was more than a year.
Is this something we can discuss as our budget coming up?
Thought that was the board wants to do.
I'd make a motion to table it now and as more further into budget.
Got him. Is, I have a motion in a second for, uh, we'll discuss this at budget time. Is there any discussion? No discussion, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. See you at budget time.
Hey, I got a question for you. Uh, I got this thing, these things are loud today.
Hey, I'll set it back here.
So, uh. The wheel.
Well, I've, well, I've got a lot of stuff on the wheel tax. House bill.
It was the house bill, uh, it did not pass yet. Where we have the wheel tax, more than have community crossings.
Okay.
If we did have the wheel tax, we could only get half of the one point five, which would be seven hundred and fifty thousand. And of that seven hundred and fifty thousand, if we did have a wheel tax, we even have to pay fifty percent of the match versus if we go for the one point five, we would only have to pay fifty percent. Didn't have wheel tax, we would have to pay fifty percent of the seven hundred and fifty that we get. That's all we can apply.
Okay, well, I just get, I just get emails and I just want to make sure we're getting the most we can get.
Three things because I get emails, I got a lot of turnouts. Whenever we met the research conference, that was a big talk, you had the road school, the big talk, Sullivan, Brock, I know Teresa sent an email on it. I, I know this is what this county doesn't want, another tax, but, uh, we've done a lot. We across the backs of the ranch every year. Well, where's the money to get it out?
I have a question. The question's over.
Yes, I, I talked to the representative, well, he was down to, you know, he got the grant, come in, get the check. So. Mr. Culp said that he's still kind of in some whiskey, whiskey yard, but he did not think we have to pass. So we might be able to speak by for another year, but I think Teresa's was, we have to have it in place by September, right, to get funding by January.
That's what this said.
And it's, uh, the minimum or you can go to maximum. There's, I need to go like one county around us. I mean, Golden County has a wheel tax, Stark County, Marshall County, they're all talking the wheel tax. And it was all like, some of them in my position is like, now's the time to implement it because we was kind of getting a little pressure downstate. Whether we go in for the full amount or the minimum.
So you mean not to have it? Because I think there's a difference for the minimum and the higher. We haven't talked this one until this week.
And when they was talking, it was not a factor. Yes, this Teresa sent an email out.
I mean, I did have.
They, they did not pass the bill to make it the one point five, we could only get half of it. And it's in place probably in the winter future for like maybe next year, we might have the rest of the wheel tax. If I had my way, I would go ahead and implement it. So you can start in January and go in from the bare minimum, release them out. You can go and hand up or the LTAC website or you can go to the office, stop by, I got those shirts, what the rates are.
Gave us them last month.
Yeah, I think I passed enough.
Yeah. And we had them.
Talk about it possibly at a joint meeting or get information. Myself, I mean, if we didn't have the community crossings, we would be hurt. But I, I have to give all the twenty-five percent out of County Highway.
Okay. Thank you. Well, the next thing, uh, we don't, Chris doesn't need to be on the agenda, we discussed. Next person. Judge Coker. Here.
I need to have seen toward initial for a hundred and fifty thousand. And the reason for that, uh, ten jurors versus jury trials, I get through our calendar today, we have eighteen jury trials, eighteen jury trial days, but there were eighty jury trials scheduled through December, November, December this year. We have already done. And we have one tomorrow, she's like, I gotta read my tickets. Uh, we have already done. Eight jury trials so far this year. Uh, and then. And so what I'm doing is asking for the twenty thousand, I've got through all, so title all of our jury trial, which is what paid jurors the mileage that they, that it takes for them to come. So I can calculate that in three days. They gave us their mileage, we have the best of the other court clients. That's just based on our trials that we do. With regards to the, not how the council, we are asking for the two thousand dollars for our how the council budget. Most of that, uh, in my budget has been used, uh, apparently by my individual, especially the individual activity, um, that unfortunately this individual requires a special judge. Uh, so we don't have, I don't self or definitely have control over the Chinese, uh, what goes on, if it's, and so far, if we're past about the two thousand dollars for this particular individual, and so unfortunately that is really. Really problematic. And so what I ask for the individual to do is.
Those eighteen you have scheduled, how, eighty years?
We have eighteen scheduled.
How many of them you think will go to?
All of them. So the way that we do it.
Had eight of them, eighteen.
Eight to one. We have eighteen more days scheduled, so that would be like the, like, three, three thousand to a leader. And so the way that I do it is I schedule twenty days on every jury trial day, so that way I don't ever miss a jury or the funds for them to come. What used to happen is a jury had to call, they would show up, somebody would plead, everybody issue, we can't still try to get them to say. We don't do that anymore. Uh, I think the first three days, we prepped, usually the first slide, we prepared to go. And so I have a jury sitting here and if the first case settles, you go right on to the next one. So it's a little bit of a stick with those funds, because we have to give jurors your arguments. So I can't tell you of those renewed cases, I'm probably, you'll know, but I can't tell you that they will definitely would be two days under trial. So we have the first mileage, one and first.
Got a motion in a second to. It to advertise the additional for fifteen and the upper council for twenty. There any discussion? No dis.
Don't. Know what you did last year? Cause we doubled your upper council from last year to this.
So forty percent, uh, that is right now. We are, um, we have a five, we would be up to three, three percent that we didn't have five. I would say we should agree that we want to be the number six there. We tried to do this trial for the season, we had a procedure, we tried to look at that so we do it. I can tell you other lots of process, all of them. I do the council process. And that's really important for us, yeah. Yeah, very.
Any other discussion? Discussion? Favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Aye. Carry. Carla. Hector. Gay. B C A member. Yeah, why not?
Okay, so you all receive five names that are questioning to take the. As a councilor that was in that. Conflict. So as done in the past, select your person. Five names. That people have come to and talked about. So. A couple of them are here. Question. F. I had.
Do we go through Carla and then to the before that they made to retire and to the law?
Yes.
Uh, none of them reside within Winemac or they have property outs?
If they have property out. Yeah.
Okay, so do they, do all five of, all five can have property outside?
Well, here's the names publicly. So Daryl Goodiman, Ron DeSavettine, Jamie Murray, Courtney, Courtney four, Mark Eber. Five choice. F. Guys wanna? Voter.
The I C code says that they have to reside outside the towns of Winemac or France have their own B C A board. And, and Courtney both reside within the town of Winemac. I guess I just want to make sure they also have outside of.
They have to be a resident.
Resident, yeah, resident.
Property.
No, okay, I said that wrong.
Number one.
Right, they have to be a resident, but if they are a resident with inside those towns, then they have to. Right? In a code?
Here it is.
Simon.
Nine oh five.
So I know we probably, I know two of them, so it's a resident on it?
What is?
So the only thing I would say I was a primary member, who's looking at the property, but since we said a resident, then if you would be certainly, I mean, this obviously they would be an opportunity because when people have a way to verify that this is a team that we have two different quarters. Parties. They. Based on the language, I don't know, I'm assuming if we felt as a.
Well, I just want to make sure we're doing what's proper as well. So if this is the I C code, but you said you vetted them, I just want. It's just one code, multiple codes.
So like I said, if that's a board, we can ask them to do that based on the original two paper, that was a nine, two and nine oh five, just to not include those two in that some of that people all know. So I guess I'm a little confused when, why do you hold me? Because one, they need to be a resident in where they would be in jurisdiction of the way we got them to be that way. So, um, so with them having homes, that's still having the land, there's really no resident and. But there's looking at section two, it's the member of the state resident, they also lose the property, both within the whole and heard, and the jurisdiction very well.
Um, but the town of Winemac and the town of Francisville have their own B C A, so they have their own jurisdiction. Separate from the county. Of reside in, uh, Winemac or town of Francisville, and that that B C A. From. Well, yeah, if they do, but I don't know that either of them do.
But one of them, so the nine, the one that she would have reached that they would do a lot of that head, I'm no stranger to gray areas than Ford and Stanley, but I feel more than that. So if, if as a board, I feel like because two places differently, when you face two people in the residential red thing, feeling differently, probably should not be. He said.
So do you?
I put this thing. No, not at all. You think we don't have that many times to do, like in the past, last, we don't have just one or two. So it's just one or two people that you.
He personally has a resident, even if he's saying he's.
Well, they said, well, I didn't know all, we just said, uh, two questions, a couple of questions, we're going to ask, we're going to. They're going to mess up a couple of the people more than people that have that.
I did, we see, I just. Did we see? Thank you. Who's that?
Okay, so since. That leaves three candidates. I'll make a motion for Mark Eber.
Have a motion. Second. Mark Eber. Discussion. Graduate of Winemac, ninety-eight. Get a blue.
Live around?
Huh? I have lived. Live across from where Richard Summers used to live. Yes, that's where I thought you. How long you? Like, I'm. Um.
Many years ago, I lived in town, a job, or I came open with a town council. And I tried to get involved in. Didn't get picked. Now. Ever. Everything's going on. I don't want to run for office because I don't want the headache of. Run through public. I want to be involved. However, little or as much as I. Are you throwing mail or? I would say yes.
Um, I used to, the company I worked for here in town, it's bought out, so the company now is actually. Further discussion? Further discussion, we'll vote, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Else too? I guess. I don't know, we had a motion. Anybody want to speak? Jamie, you want to speak or, uh? I don't even think. Daryl? Oh, yeah. I'll make sure. Rudy and Courtney's out, right?
How much time do you have? So I'm a resident of Placet County. I thought it was two and a half. Can you set the timer? Um, resident of Placet County my whole life, own land outside of the city limits, live outside of the town limit, everyone word it. Don't live in Francisville. Live between here and Francisville, worked for the state for fourteen years. January I resigned slash retired from my position. I took a corporate field representative job with. I invested in this county and community. Um, I am on the farmer's market board. The fair board for years. Reach for years. No agent. Um, I think like a lot of people in the community, there's a lot of things going on that no one's really sure about. And I think the transparency that's happening is not there. Just. I would like to be able to be more involved to understand what is actually going on. Well versed in it as I possibly.
Well, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? I don't know, I don't have to get any attorney out for that one now. Take a motion. Have a motion. You can always vote now. That's our.
An email. It's from Carla, it's Carla sending it out to all. It's from Carla, it's Carla sending it out to all.
I do have a question, if that's okay. I was nominated and appointed last year, why does this happen again? So that's kind of where it just goes at last year is at the end of the year, I was told, actually in the middle of the year, I think it was, we told you Carla, that I was appointed and it didn't go very well. So now this is all happening again, so I'm a little concerned as to why. So there's one of the reasons when Asia asked, what, this is why I wanted to learn more about this process because I think you're already been appointed, why are you coming in again? And my name is on the website saying I was appointed that. So I don't know if there's any way to clarify that.
So what I understand was you were classified as an alternate on there and based on what the procedure versus what Indiana code is. This is another reason why I'm reporting to the attorney because Indiana code changes all time and it was a procedure that's not been updated since probably twenty twenty. And so then that means there's conflict there and I'm always kind of your authority following there's a procedure, but also then there's Indiana code. So I, my understanding is I did not do that.
And I appreciate that, I just didn't know where things were going and, you know, but I figured I'd ask.
So basically what I've learned in the last few months with, um, alternatives is they can't just come to a general meeting just because somebody's sick or, uh, you know, whatever, they're in the hospital. And alternative is if somebody has to, uh, remove themselves from this meeting permanently, what I know conflict of interest at the time, like say, um, if we have a special exception and it's the name for that, once the special exception, you can probably get a fourth member from the unit to have your back for that exception. No person except the, um, exactly now. Yes. They, but I don't need to get on now, but it could be issued. You know, you know, because there's no seat for the alternate to fill for the time.
Okay, so speaking about an attorney, have you reached out because, and do you have one because?
Yeah, I do, I think we should vote. Have a motion and a second. Had discussion. All those in favor? Five was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? How many nays? Or three? What about the attorney?
Okay, so I would be asking requesting additional for eight thousand dollars for each board.
Thank you. Okay, and requesting an additional of eight thousand dollars for BCA and all of eight thousand dollars for APC. I have two options. I have talked to, again, several, several attorneys who don't want to go with utilities, for lack of a better way to word it, they've retired, um, or, uh, they don't want to involve in Plaski County. Um, so I have two names of attorneys that I have spoken to and let BCA and APC both know about both of these attorneys. They're aware of, um, some legal matters that have been presented to my boards. Um, they're also aware that our rules of procedure and Indiana code don't coordinate. Um, I've also discussed with the, if the one that would be considered for APC, well, uh, just both of them, I guess whoever, whatever, whoever APC decides, that there are some discrepancies in our ordinance that need clarified. Um, I've spoken to some people that their office does involve themselves with ordinance. I have briefly, um, discussed, um, some language, the ordinance. So, um, it will be a, a large effort to get some areas in the ordinance, uh, straightened out. And so these attorneys are both aware and they will fix or, well, uh, alter, help guide the language, text amendments, potentially. The ordinance as well as, like I said, make with Indiana code.
Okay, I have the information about that attorney. So would the BCA and the APC have two different attorneys? Well, that's.
A has the choice to vote for their own attorney and APC has the choice to vote for their own attorney. So each attorney is aware that they would potentially represent both boards.
Both of these guys are in agreement to do that?
Yes. Princelier. And it's the information that at APC, you've already seen their names and then.
So needed, oh, for eight thousand, is that to pay the, is that to pay?
For their fee, or I, I'm hoping we won't need that, but I.
That their retainer that they're asking?
Well, so both of them said they would waive it, but when we're at two hundred and fifteen an hour and three fifty an hour, I'd just rather be sorry.
Yeah, but we have a budget and we don't like additional. I mean, I don't know what everybody else's opinion is. I just. None.
You have a thousand dollars in your.
We have a thousand.
Go ahead and fill you up to the thousand.
I have an appeal right now with BCA and we've never done any legal matters without counsel. And have some legal issues that APC wants to get ironed out also. I am not comfortable going, but.
I don't think anybody's asking me to go beyond that. I think what we're just trying to figure out is how much money to get going.
Okay.
Have a thousand dollars.
Well, I was, uh, I was trying to remember what I had, um, requested for Jacob and I thought it was thousand, knowing that we had the thousand dollars.
Our budget's tight anyway and. Have a thousand, always come back because you know they're going to. Hire. My opinion, if I want to make the motion, I don't care.
Hire. Well, oh, no, we. Funds just to hire, hire. No, we do, we only have a thousand dollars total. So beyond the thousand dollars, have any other?
You can come back, once you get the bill, you can come back and ask for the additional. A thousand, what, I think what everyone's trying to say is there's money there for you to get going.
Well, uh, if, they said they would waive the retainer if each one represented both boards. So the hours of.
So I want to do something, all right?
And then if he drives. Well, my first one, I think sixty, and now I'm going to add you as one. Thousand, A and E. That's the way they were waiving the retainers in contracts that I have.
So can you go back to your APC board and your BCA board and decide whether or not you're getting one attorney or attorneys and whether we're, whether we're waiving the retainer? Because that makes a big difference, whether we're giving an eight thousand retainer to each of them or we're not giving a retainer at all.
Right.
Sixteen thousand dollars or nothing. Am I understanding you correctly?
Thousand.
I.
Right.
You have a motion on the floor, you want to take your motion back or you want to try to? Motion, make it eight now, amend it to eight? Got an amended motion out, thousand, Brad's going to second it. He. Vector thousand dollar, advertise for an additional. Any discussion? Best one. Favor, five is saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Harry. Thank you. Thanks, Teresa. Roll off where.
Okay, what this system is that I'm wanting, yeah. What I'm wanting to implement in my office is a true rule is a, a system that will, um, make sure that people that are getting homesteads in our county actually truly live here, um, because it hurts the rest of us that truly do. So this company, um, what they will do is go through our property, our low tax property system. And if they find any that are not legal, there are people's property somewhere else, what they will do is it, the, the system to do it, for them to go through our system, costs twenty-five hundred dollars. One-time fee and I can pay that, I can do a transfer out of my, um, budget to do that. So then after that, if they do find any, they get thirty percent of what they collect and we get the rest of it. So say somebody's been receiving a homestead for the last three years, which is as far as we can go back, they would have to pay that money back. Quite a chunk. So, um, I'm just asking permission from you if I can transfer money out of my budget to pay for it. And also, um, I've already went to the commissioners and asked permission to actually do the true rule, but I just need to transfer the money out of my budget. Um, so I'm not asking for an additional. So it's coming out of my, um, actually I have it. I'm actually taking it out of my reservation of putting it in. Because, because we have ten thousand reservation of records, um, and with our nine fifty, we have a grant that we had received. So that's paying preservation, been doing out here. With all our old books and that, but, um, so I was wanting to.
I'll make a motion. Or do I have to?
Sure, let's do it. Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Vote, favor, five is saying aye. Opposed? Harry. Nathan, next.
Hey, everybody, um, going to give you a couple of courthouse updates first, once the laptop comes free. Project finances, our owner's contingencies current balance is down to seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. Although this does not reflect the return of fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-six coming to us from an HVAC issue or a credit we'll be receiving for eliminating the east lawn sidewalk. You have a couple of small change orders, ticket items and other adjustments in the works to tie up some loose ends. These won't break contingency bank and one or two of them will actually come out of our separate IT line item rather than contingency. I'm not able to give a specific total because we still have to ensure that all of our IT, furniture, appliance expenditures are wrapped up before I can, but I do expect we'll have a few dollars here and there to carve off the end of the day in, back into the contingency as well as the final remaining balance of destruction in contingency once it is released. Once, any questions on finances? All right, it's on progress, uh, Luminaut was on site last Tuesday for the punch list walkthrough for the basement and the first floor. Some of the work on the second floor had to be postponed to allow the new floor stain and clear coat to dry and to cure properly. A return in early July to conduct the overall site and second floor punch list walkthrough as well as I imagine confirmed completion of punch list correction after last week's walkthrough. Present, the only subcontractors still on site are the electricians, painters and carpenters. Landscapers will be here later this week and Meridian Street and the parking lot between the Justice Center and Howard's are scheduled to be paved on Saturday, weather permitting. Central might bump that up to the end of the work week if rain remains forecasted, it have done. Furniture delivery will take place in two phases beginning next week. When SAT work has been completed, we can look at having rowing begin IT installation. Rowing has also assisted me in determining the right new microphones to purchase for our existing sound system for better sound transmission for our meeting streams once we move. Any questions on progress to date of the project? All right, and switching gears to a county comprehensive plan. Late last week, after receiving confirmation from Board of Commissioners President Street, gave curpsy the green light to publish a request for proposals for the development of a new comprehensive plan for Plaski County. Curpsy will be applying to OAKRA for a planning grant on our behalf. Long story short, about the same time a conversation at an industrial park board meeting went on a tangent regarding the need for an updated plan, Minority Foundation released its report prepared by Ball State, which urged the update of this document, which hasn't been addressed since nine. After discussing the issue with the CDC who support this, approached the commissioners, they were bored. Few conversations with curpsy and individual commissioners and counselors, I was finally in a position to ask curpsy to see. Five firms will be receiving requests directly in addition to any that may see the legal notice and choose to submit a proposal. I'll be putting together an interview committee, which I am hoping will comprise Ms. Redwick and at least one plan commissioner, me, a commissioner and a counselor. Potentially two or three plan commissioners if President TD or Commissioner McClure are both interested and available. Once the firm has been selected, they'll begin a process of reviewing existing documents, interviewing key county personnel, potentially conducting surveys, holding public input sessions before producing a final plan that will have to be recommended to the commissioners by the advisory plan commission for formal adoption. Any questions? Once we are a little bit further down, and we know exactly the grant amount we're requesting, the council will have to provide some guidance as to where we want to draw the funds for our local match, whether we just want to take it out of my budget, look at solar money, look elsewhere. Somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars, depending on the total project cost. I know that I do have it in my budget, but that's just something that.
Curpsy picks the engineering company, right?
No, we, our interview committee will. They, they, they do the solicitation, work with us to set up the interviews, and then our five-person committee will make that, will, will get a score sheet that curpsy will provide, and will average the scores of the five committee members for each of the firms, and make that decision.
Oh, they'll probably be able to help.
Oh, yeah, they'll be able to help us to make, yes, they'll be able to make us rev, make sure, and they're not going to send it to any that don't have good reputation.
Sounds good. I, I had some. How you going to that person?
Curpsy will assist us, and like I said, the ones they're going to send it to are all reputable firms across the state. I think two, I don't remember the others on their list. Two of them are Hannah Weigle and Klein, and Tim Lee Horn. Tim Lee Horn is currently doing our broadband.
Next thing on the agenda is a sign to council minutes, five, twelve, twenty-five.
A motion. It's from five twelve.
Got a motion, second. Question? Question? Favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Got to revise the salary maintenance, EMS.
I have a question. Um. Money for.
Paying here, how much? Thousand.
Not including her. Or benefits.
Where are we getting? Good.
I guess I have one more question. You have that hospital study. When we spoke, we talked about how the EMT were the ones that you were in dire need of, right? That those are the ones that keep turnover constant. I, until we figure out what's going on with Senate Bill One and the budget, I would be sure of giving these raise, dollar raise during budget cycle. Doing the advance. Of the. That I'm just.
I started that.
But, yeah, I said, I know that we've all spoke with Natasha a lot of times, and expressed that her downfall, or the problem, is regular EMT. That's where she's having the hardest time. My proposal was give them the two-dollar raise that we talked about, once we get the budget, figure out what the budget looks like for next year, because of Bill One, then we address paramedics, unless I'm wrong. But she says that that's not where her turnover is, is with raises. That way, we buy some good grace with our EMT, give them the raise, they can reevaluate the other two, the hospitals. That can make sure we're aligned with all of it. No, I'm not saying to go back down, I'm saying give the EMTs their two-dollar raise, and then let's look at the hospital study as far as the advanced paramedics are, and where we, where the hospital study falls in line. Right. Right, but, but we didn't look at the study, we just made the proposal to give the raises across the board. So I'm saying, let's look at the hospital study for advanced paramedics. And then give the EMTs, because that's where she's struggling. Help her, help her. Yeah, and if that's the case, then we can reevaluate them, but at least we're buying some grace, goodwill, and trying to help her, and then.
There's three tiers, there's, there's, there's three people, and one, they have trouble getting. First, EMT, what is it?
Paramedic. And so she, she doesn't have turnover with advanced EMT. That's not where the problem is. Problem is, if the EMTs get a dollar raise, and then after the hospital study comes back, just the EMTs, that we're not spending a hundred and probably. Haven't signed it yet, so that's why I was.
How long till the, uh, forget, Jacob get the, uh? Thing?
Right, but we had that meeting. Right, and so. You haven't heard from him.
Um, I spent about an hour going through with rowing and reinstalling all of my Microsoft products.
Sorry.
All right. EMS. Do you have that? Okay. Question on that? Aye.
Um. There's also wage ordinance for deputy, and it goes over different departments. So you had, um, it was, uh, the correct, that one? Yeah. Yep.
Email to. I don't, I've. Yeah. By, uh, motion? Yes. Second. Ayes, wait. Aye. Question? Question on? Aye. Harry. Okay, next thing is, uh, transfers. We have probation nineteen hundred from medical, dental, printing, and circuit. Four thousand guardian item to guardian add items.
They had brought forth a transfer to go from eleven thirty-five Bridge two forty to eleven thirty-five, uh, Bridge repairs for twenty-six thousand, five hundred. Was it with his, when he came up?
Then the, uh, transfer. Now, let's do the transfers first, that's okay, then we'll go to the. Second. Got a motion, second. Transfer, Brad. Question? Question? Favors signify by saying aye. Opposed? Harry. Now we'll go to additional. We have, uh, the only, we already did the judge's additional. Have to do, have to. Got to. You have two, Chris, right? The equipment repair. What about the three thousand, nine pension? Okay. I want to make a, uh. Got a motion, second, the sheriff's additional. Senate, favors, signify by saying aye. Harry.
Jenny in my office had a question regarding, um, you were doing the guidelines for years of service credit, um, depending on the department. And was asking me, and I get some clarification. So the years of service credit, um, so you were saying that there was a, they cannot be separated from service for over a year between, if they left the county and come back. So then, does it also matter if they, maybe they, um, I worked somewhere, and, but it's totally different than what I'm doing now? Do you get any type of service credit with that? I mean, I don't know if it's even an option. That kind of. That's what I kind of thought. With a clarification. I have one other thing that you kind of skipped over, Mike. The joint ordinance, stop sign. Um. And I know we had a lot of discussion back at the joint meeting last month, two months ago, that we had, you had come up with that ordinance back in ninety-four that was, um, it said both the council and the commissioners both have to approve these stop sign ordinance. And I need to get this advertised, the stop sign ordinance. I need to get some direction on that. Um. So you're wanting to go ahead and, um, Jacob Taylor had talked to commissioners last Monday regarding, uh, he said that, um, you're not required to sign it, because it's normally a commissioner thing, but because of that ordinance, probably best, because it kind of set a precedent. So, um, just need a, um, a motion or, or a question regarding what you want to do, or assigning both the council and.
Yeah, it. Ordinance is in place, so we just, I don't, I, my fault. I think it is temporary. My opinion. I see. Projects. Oh. But, uh. No discussion, we'll vote, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Harry. Got a, other board business? Have anything else? Have anything else? Yeah, that's, I cut that down, I'm going down there. I'm sorry. Only board business I have is, Jerry has resigned and thank Jerry. Service. Next thing is, Jerry had, uh, departments to see before budgets. People. Somebody needs to go see oil and water. Public comment? Public comment.
Jamie Murray, Palasca County. Um, I wanted to be on record to know, does Mark Eber or does he not? Okay, so what point in time does a professional or personal conflict and you appointed him? I gave. Didn't ask if you were gaining, I asked.
This is a public comment, I don't need to.
That's a public comment.
Stack your deck a little more.
Where? Hey. I didn't. Other public comment?
Randy Larkin, Winnemac, I just wanna say thank you to those who are using your mics, somebody who tries to watch also, it's not just us who sit in the room, those of us who are, when we watch, thank you, I do appreciate it, those who are trying to effort to.
Oh, public comments closed, have any more business? The business will turn the meeting.